All right, we've got a special presentation today in sort of a recognition for an event that is in its 20th year. I'd like to have Jean Cross and Scott Fortune come up and clink just for the heck of it. I mean, you know, you've been around.
I'll just say that.
No, no, come on up. Let's have the skipster come over here too, please. Gentlemen, if you'll kind of tell us about the Good Guys event that's going to take place in Des Moines this week, and we'd like to have sort of a rundown of what's going on, and how long you've been doing it, and where it's going to occur.
Thank you, Brian. I've been involved in Good Guys. I got put in a rep program in 1992. It's the first year that Good Guys came to Des Moines. I was somewhat instrumental in getting that started because I'd met Gary and Marilyn Metters when they were here with another organization, NSRA, back in the 80s. And I called him and asked him if he'd considered doing an event in Des Moines. He says, "Well, we really haven't." But he said, "I remember the fairgrounds, and we just love it." He says, "Let me get back with you." Now, this is kind of a little joke, and it's probably more long-winded than it needs to be, but he called me back about two weeks later. He said, "His staff tells me the only weekend we got open is the Fourth of July." And I said, "Yeah?" And he says, "Well, they think that that's a family weekend where you take your boat and you go to the cabin and you spend your weekend with the family." And I said, "Well, Gary, have you got a boat?" "Well, no." And I said, "Well, have you got a cabin?" "Well, I don't have that either." I said, "Well, I think you answered your own question." So they started in '92, and at that time in their history, they were just organized in about '85. And our event here drew 1,300 cars that first year with a drizzly rainy weekend, and they were quite impressed. It was the biggest first-time event they'd ever had anywhere. And it's just perpetuated from there. The record so far is 3,500 cars. Of course, it depends on weather, it depends on gas prices, it depends on... They love Des Moines, and the Fairgrounds crew loves them. It's just, it's a marriage made in heaven, folks. And I've always wondered, I didn't, never attended the Grand Prix when we did that, but I always thought that it was inefficient, spent a lot of money, I don't know how many people that do to town, but I think you're all aware of what Good Guys is doing for our economy now. Scott Fortune here is a new rep in the program. Thinking about retiring, but I haven't put a number on the date yet. I always use more free help, so... Scott asked to get involved in the program, and I'm glad I put him in. I've got some personal problems this year. He stepped right up, and he helped things happen again. He's up to speed.
Yeah.
He'll make you proud of Good Guys again. Scott, what do you want to say?
The only thing I'd like to follow up with what Jean is saying is this is a family event. I've got three boys. We've worked the event since 1990, I guess it is. And my boys have grown up, and now they're working the gate that we worked together by themselves, and they're 30, 30 down to 24. So it's a family event, and it's very good. And I think Des Moines should be proud of what they do. Fairgrounds is just outstanding. I'm proud of the Fairgrounds. It's really, it's cool. It's just me.
Well, and I'd like to add that these are Iowa boys, too. We have Jean is from Runnels, and Scott's from Cresco. And these two guys over here are the drug man to this a number of years ago. And it has been a lot of fun, I'll tell you. And although I got to tell you, I didn't particularly like the autocross thing as much as you thought I was going to. And, but nevertheless, they, it's been a great event, and it's been driven by a bunch of local guys. And I don't know if either one of you with all your history in it want to add anything to it, but we've got a special certificate that we ought to probably... Yeah, all right.
You can tell that. Tell the mayor's angry about the autocross. I thought he'd love being in the autocross. Evidently, he didn't. I'd just like to point out that the Good Guys are a great family event. Never heard of a bit of trouble out there. There isn't any trouble out there. And it even goes further in that Gary Metters that owns the Good Guys is from Pleasanton, California, and he loves fireworks. And they put on one heck of a fireworks display on Saturday night. What's good is the north parking lot is open, and it's packed with people just to come in and see the fireworks. But I would encourage everybody to make an attempt to get out there at least one day, and you'll really see some really nice iron from all over this country. It's a very classy show.
Now, just to defend myself, I want to tell you all one thing. They told me that I was going to get in kind of a grandma's car out there, and that these guys were, I was watching them. We stood there for about a half hour, and the fastest car in the place, they just had the fastest two times of the day. One was 45 seconds, I think one went 43. And so then they said, "Go get in this car over here." Well, all of a sudden, this, I get in this thing, and the whole inside is torn out. It's got roll bars in there and all kinds of stuff. They started it up, and it wasn't a lawnmower engine. I mean, this thing had about 900 horsepower, and this guy pulls up, and he says, "Well, we're going to take a quick run." They ran it in 38 seconds, which was five seconds faster than the nearest time that it had been run for two days. And I thought, "Why didn't I get to drive?" I mean, I am a terrible passenger driving at those speeds, but I'll tell you, he was a great driver, and it was a great car, and I am still here to tell about it. So I'm happy to tell you all that. So we have a certificate of special recognition presented to the Good Guys Heartland Nationals. Today, we recognize the Good Guys Heartland Nationals 20th Anniversary Celebration, Good Guys Heartland National Facts. It is the second-largest event the Good Guys Rod and Custom Association produces, featuring over 3,500 cars from 12 states. Iowa's largest automotive event for classic cars and hot rods through 1972 vintage... That car was not 1972. I want you guys to know that. It had a body on it that looked like it was 1972. Here it featured cars as early as 1923 Ford Model Ts to a 1972 Plymouth Barracuda and everything in between. The three-day event attracts over 80,000 people to the Iowa State Fairgrounds, brings in over $2.5 million into our community annually, and Des Moines' show is the Good Guys' third-oldest national event. So on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, we welcome you to the city of Des Moines and congratulate you and your 20th anniversary Good Guys Heartland Nationals. And we present it this day, the 27th day of June 2011. Thank you very much, and congratulations. (applause) We'll get a quick picture, and we're going to give this to you, and point it. those of you that arrived here early, we've had the exciting event of the Municipal Housing Okay? Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Agency Governing Board, and we're going to start that right now. I'm going to ask the clerk to take the role, or the roll call for the housing agency board.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a form.
Item two is approving the submittal, the Residential Opportunity in Self-Sufficiency, R-O-S-S, Service Coordinator Program Grant Application at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's Board Communication Number 11-399. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this program and this grant? Seeing none, the item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. Item three is approving the amended guiding principles for the Affordable Housing Development Fund for Use of Proceeds and Future Proceeds from the Sale of Public Housing Units for the Capital Development Projects, Home Ownership Initiatives, and Other HUD Approved Purposes, Board Communication Number 11-395. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The board is adjourned. Takes us to the City Council meeting. Prior to our starting the meeting this evening, we're going to have a quick invocation by our own council member, Chris Coleman. And those who would want to participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Thank you. A prayer in the back of our misled at mass is this, the prayer for the needy. Grant that I may gladly share what I have with the needy. Humbly ask for what I need from him who has. Sincerely admit the evil I have done. Calmly bear the evil I suffer. Not envy my neighbor for his blessings. And thank you unceasingly whenever you hear my prayer. Amen. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we have a quick motion to reconvene in City Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We said, "As City Council, we will ask quickly for the record, the clerk to take a role, please."
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a form.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Unless there's any changes, I would ask somebody to give us a motion on that.
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The board is adjourned. Takes us to the City Council meeting. Prior to our starting the meeting this evening, we're going to have a quick invocation by our own council member, Chris Coleman. And those who would want to participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Thank you. A prayer in the back of our misled at mass is this, the prayer for the needy. Grant that I may gladly share what I have with the needy. Humbly ask for what I need from him who has. Sincerely admit the evil I have done. Calmly bear the evil I suffer. Not envy my neighbor for his blessings. And thank you unceasingly whenever you hear my prayer. Amen. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we have a quick motion to reconvene in City Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We said, "As City Council, we will ask quickly for the record, the clerk to take a role, please."
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a form.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Unless there's any changes, I would ask somebody to give us a motion on that.
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. Let's move to item three, which is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 41. These are items that are approved as routine items and will be enacted as one roll call vote unless a member of the audience or our City Council pulls an item for additional clarification or discussion. Tonight, there actually have been no items pulled. The council member, Moore, and I vote no on item five. Are there any items to be pulled for additional discussion by the, by somebody in the audience? Seeing none, could we have a...
I'll move. The remainder.
Remainder has been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. All right, takes us to item 42. Item 42 is an ordinance which is being brought to us for first consideration. That's amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code, submitting traffic regulation changes as follows, Council Communication Number 11-408. A is the realignment of on-street parking due to the renovation work at the Kirkwood condominiums. B is a petition for a two-sided parking restriction at the 100 block of East Titus Avenue. And C is a petition to allow parking on the Pond View Circle. Anyone in the audience have any comments on these recommendations? Seeing none, could we have a motion? And does somebody want to move?
I'll move. Item 42, A, B, and C, and request, non-prepublished, in the second and third reading.
Item's been moved.
Seven yes.
Item 43, which is amending Chapter 30 of the municipal code regarding persons under age 21 on the premises having an after-hours business license. A is a final consideration of the ordinance above, and is requested by Council Member Hensley, and requires six votes.
I'll move 43A.
Item 43 and 43A have been moved. Any comments by anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we all could vote.
Seven yes.
All right, item 44. These are council requests from Council Member Christine Hensley to speak regarding post office locations in the downtown area. Mrs. Hensley?
I received calls and emails last week from some businesses primarily located in Capital Square. And I don't know if there's anybody here from Capital Square that would want to add to this, but they've received a notice to attend a meeting. And we did receive information in the form of a letter from the City Manager's Office summarizing some public meetings that were held last week for both downtown as well as for the Highland Park area. What I would like, number one, to point out for the downtown area, we have closed other post office operations down on 14th and Grand. So really, the only major postal facility you have downtown is in Capital Square, which is a high-use postal operation. You do have one on Second Avenue, but it's difficult to get to from downtown. All of the post office, the mail drop boxes, many of them have been taken out of the major buildings. For example, 801 Grand does not have any type of facility. You actually have to take the mail someplace else. But I mean, it's, it's just shrinking, shrinking. I'd like to see us send a letter of concern to the appropriate parties, and maybe even copy our state senators on that letter to see what we can do. And I know, Bob, you might want to address it from Highland Park area.
I do. Yeah, I'd like to include Highland Park there. I've had calls. You know, that's the area up there, they've already taken one off East 14th, and now they're trying to take the one out of Highland Park, which has great bus transportation and that end of that area for those who don't have their own vehicles for transportation. And certainly like to maintain that there if we're all possible.
And I might add that the bus service does not go to the post office at Second University, which makes it even more important to have some type of a location on public transit in the downtown area. So my motion would be that we send a letter on behalf of the mayor and city council to the postmaster, explaining our concerns and the importance of that, both downtown and Highland Park, and that we carbon copy our state senators on the letter. And Congressman Boswell.
Go ahead.
Seven yes?
Item 45 is from Council Member Brian Meyer to speak regarding placement of banners in the Fairgrounds neighborhood on East Grand Avenue from railroad tracks to East 30th Street.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This came from a request at the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association last week that they thought to try and do something to sort of promote their neighborhood in the, I don't know if it's in time for the upcoming state fair, but perhaps the state fair next year. What I'd request in this is that refer to the City Manager's Office, for them to work with Fairgrounds Neighborhood and perhaps Capital East, Nadine's here, neighborhood, to see if there's something we can do to work out a similar plan like we do with, I know, Southwest 9th and over here in the East Village on some of these banners, and see how we can help the Fairgrounds and work through this, and see if we can get done for them in the next year. So the motion would be to refer this to the City Manager's Office to work with Tina Payton from Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association, and Nadine Hogate and others from Capital East.
So Brian, are they promoting the fair, or are they trying to identify with the East Neighborhood Association?
Well, I think it's up in the air at this point. They want to do both, sort of promote, hey, this is our neighborhood. You know, the buses go down Dean.
Right.
And so, you know, hey, this is our neighborhood. We're proud of our neighborhood, and as you're going to the state fair on these buses and stuff. And I think it's a great idea to promote that. So they're promoting their neighborhood at the same time as promoting the state fair.
Sounds good. Anyone in the audience to discuss or make comment? Nadine, sounds good? That's a yes. All right.
Seven yes?
All right, let's move on to item 55, which is approving IDOT agreement for the construction of the Des Moines River Regional Trail Phase 1, Council Communication Number 11-411. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? Seeing none, council, could we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Seven yes?
Item 56, Preliminary Terms of Agreement with Startup City Des Moines LLC for City Assistance in the Creation of a Business Incubator in Downtown Des Moines, Council Communication Number 11-433. We've had a couple of presentations on this, and it sounds quite interesting. Mrs. Hensley?
I'll make the motion to approve this and move forward with the preliminary process. But we did have a presentation, and I would just ask that, when it comes back to us, that we have some defined benchmarks, so that we can evaluate the success of the program. And I know that's a little bit difficult, but I think it's real important when we have projects like this, that there's some benchmark that we can measure back against, so that we have some sense as to whether or not we should continue with the program. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to be supportive, and there is also a condition in the blue letter that the other funds have to be designated or be approved by the other bodies, too, before we go forward, I think, so.
But the idea, I think, is to try to make sure that we can move them from the incubator out into a...
Add it to a full...
Full-fledged.
Yeah. Which we want. In the city of Des Moines.
Productive business. Item's been moved.
Seven yes?
All right, item 57, A Letter of Interest from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, Greening America's Capitals Program, Council Communication Number 11-432. Anybody in the audience? Any council members want, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'm very pleased with this. On the blue letter that we received, under additional information, the very first line reads, "The goal of Greening America's Capitals is to help state capital cities create a clear, implementable vision of distinct environmentally friendly neighborhoods that incorporate innovative green building and green infrastructure systems." And it's interesting when you talk about green infrastructure systems, because they're not exactly what you might think on the surface. And what I'm pleased is that Larry Holt's acting, or city assistant city manager, has been assigned to sing to it that we have staff going to the National Conservation Training Center in September to learn about green infrastructure systems. So if we are awarded this, our staff will be prepared to move ahead when we receive this. I think it's good news, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I will move 57.
Item 57's move. Any other comments?
Seven yes?
Item 58, Intergovernmental 28E Agreement between the City of Des Moines, the State of Iowa, and the Department of Public Defense for Upgrading of the Iowa Air National Guard Airfield Facilities, Council Communication Number 11-422. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
In the blue letter, I just was curious, as we specifically have in here, reimbursement of expenses will occur within seven days of invoice with the Iowa Air National Guard paying 6% interest beginning on the eighth day. I've never seen anything so specific within eight days. Is there a reason for that?
Mayor and council, I'm not aware of the specific details on this one. I'm not sure if engineering or if representative from the airport is here.
If they could just get us, and, there must have been something that triggered that. I'd just be curious as to why. Sounds like somebody didn't pay their bills previously.
Probably past history.
That's my guess. It was a little slow, maybe, on the return. Is that the... So that would be one item. The other item is then on the stormwater utility. We still need to have a follow-up meeting with the airport and Iowa Air National Guard. There's been some correspondence on that. And if we could just make sure and get that scheduled. And I'll move that item.
Well, it's great they continue to stay out there. They add a lot to our economic structure of the city.
They do. Very important.
Christine?
Seven yes?
Item 59, A Contract with Langley Productions, Inc. to Film Various Activities of the Des Moines Police Officers for Inclusion in the Television Series, COPS, Council Communication Number 11-406. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I'll move.
Seven yes?
Item 60 is the Iowa State Fair Authority to construct a bus drop-off lane in the north right-of-way of Dean Avenue. Council Communication Number 11-434 is a request from the Iowa State Fair for temporary no-parking signs from August 11th to the 21st of 2011. I want to thank our staff for moving this ahead. It's sort of an unusual arrangement and required us to move pretty quickly, but I think it's my understanding that the fair is going to incur most, if not all, of the cost to get this done. I'm seeing heads go up and down, so.
I'll move 60 and 68.
Mayor?
Yep.
Could we ask staff that's dealing with the Fairgrounds on this? I drove out there and took a look at this, to see just what it was going to be like. And there is, there is any shade around there. Could we ask them to incorporate some shade trees along with this project? You know, we'd like to help the Fairgrounds. They're, they bring a lot of money into the city. They're a major attraction, you know. A few years ago, they were the third-top family attraction in the country, so, just a request.
Mr. Coleman?
I'm with Skip.
Seven yes?
All right, we have one extra item. It's a preliminary terms of agreement with Richard Eichner for the city assistance for the redevelopment of property at 3801 Merle Hay Road. It's Council Communication Number 11-437. Ask the city assistant city manager here to enlighten us.
Mayor and council, OED staff has been working with Mr. Eichner and his attorney, Mr. Willis, or, excuse me, Mr. Lilis, regarding development at the corner of Merle Hay and Douglas on the northeast corner. Staff was working as late as this afternoon to reach an agreement, a preliminary agreement that will come back to the council on July 11th as a final agreement. It is approximately a five-plus-million-dollar development project. The incentive package has a value of approximately $500,000. That's comprised of 50% of the tax increment revenue that's generated by the project itself is returned to the developer for a 15-year period.
If anyone doesn't have anything to add, I'd be happy to move this, but I think this is a great project. I think us being able to help them out financially is good, but I think this is also a precedent that we can work with going forward, where we're not going to be breaking the bank. I think it's something that's reasonable. And also, just as a side note, there's also construction going up across the street where the Furniture Row Outlet, where the pawn shop was planning on locating last year, has started construction. has started construction. They tore down the old building. They're building a new building there. So there's a lot of development happening on that corner. And I think the neighborhood's excited to see this kind of take off, so.
I have one amendment. No pawn shops or payday lenders.
If we have to add that to his, we're in trouble. Mayor, I, just a couple of, because I've watched this pretty carefully since Mr. Eichner first started buying property in the corner. Things are going really well there. And I just, I wanted to compliment the Neighborhood Association. Joanne is here and this project probably wouldn't have had tenants if it wasn't for Joanne and Rich really fighting hard over pawn shop regulations and other things. Were able to get a much better group of tenants here and I just wanted to say thanks. I also know that when you woke up this morning, Alan, there was a lot of distance between where, where we might be to get this done. And it's really critical for his tenants that we had a deal today. And I just wanted to compliment you and Terry and the team that worked on this to make sure it was ready for tonight, Jeff, your team. So I appreciate that because this is really, really big for Northwest Des Moines. Everybody knows what we did with Merle Hay Mall over the last three years as they've retooled their mall. And we hope that that would be a real springboard to things happening in the neighborhood. And they clearly are. Drive up and down there, the city has a project underway to widen the road down by Urbendale and going up towards the mall. It's all really good and exciting. So it feels good to support this.
Just one other comment. I know in the discussions that we had with Mr. Eichner that there will be continued conversations and communications with the, with the neighborhood as they proceed through the remainder of the process before they can break ground and start to see a structure come up.
And as we vote, I would like to add to that, that certainly look forward to your development moving forward, Mr. Eichner. And I think we have to be careful how far we want TIF areas to proceed. But I think that certainly we want to offer some sort of support for you to move this forward quickly. I will also say that I'm somewhat concerned as I look out the windows behind all of you towards the Capitol as to what's going to happen with our property taxes and our ability to be able to, to use TIF if we see as large of reductions in, in commercial property tax values, which potentially could limit the amount of TIF that's available for not only this, but that, that tool that we've used so well and quite frankly, discriminately by this council to make things go and keep the city vital and alive and exciting and more inviting for not only our residents, but the people that visit us. So let's all work together to not only make this a success, but let's send the message to the people up there on the hill behind us debating these issues that there's lots of things connected to how property tax works and how valuations work and how the whole tax formula works. And there's lots of consequences to, to change that have to be all discussed and debated prior to just putting something on the table. So thank you for coming in. And I think that you, you've got support for this moving forward. So thanks for coming down.
Seven yes?
That brings us to the end of the regular agenda. However, we've got some hearing items which were a little bit early for. Could we have a motion to recess as the council and reconvene as board of health, please?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. The city council now sits as the board of health. Item one is approving the legal department to proceed with court actions seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1837 East Grand Avenue. It's a main structure. And B is 1418 Hunter Street, and that's a garage structure. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on either one of these items? Seeing none, could we have a motion from a member of the board?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn and then reconvene as city council?
Move.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we sit back as city council. I think, what's your-
You're closing it.
Then two minutes.
All right, we're going to begin our hearings. And I think by the time we get this ready for discussion, it's going to be 5 o'clock. And we see 4:59 on the manager's clock here. So item one on the hearings is 46 on the conveyance of a license agreement at 1012 Oak Park Avenue, which is McHenry Park, to Quest Corporation for $200. Council Communication Number 11-421. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Seeing none, I'll move item 46. We need to continue that work at McHenry Park and Riverview Nature Island.
Seven yes?
Anything we can do to kind of improve the beautification of it so it doesn't look as much like a strip mine? We'd-
It'd be appreciated.
Love for that to happen, sir. 47, on the vacation and conveyance of the remaining public alley right-of-way in the block bound by Vine Water Market in Southwest Second Streets to Waterfront Lodging, Inc. for $39,856 and its subject to conditions. Council Communication Number 11-412. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. And the request is by the applicant to waive those other readings requires six votes.
I'll move 47, A and B.
47, A and B has been moved. Anyone in the audience to discuss? Any questions? Seeing none?
Seven yes?
All right, item 48, on the vacation and lease of alleys adjoining 1312 Locust and 1408 Locust to Westgate Partnership LLC, subject to conditions. Council Communication Number 11-420. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Again, it's requested the waiver by the applicant and again requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 48, A and B. And boy, was I impressed with how quickly, Carol, they started work on the building today after the arts festival.
The whole thing.
Yeah, major change already.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
Item 49, on a request from QuickTrip Corporation to rezone property at 2300 East 14th Street from limited C1 Neighborhood Retail Commercial to C1 Neighborhood Retail Commercial. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. And the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move 49, A and B. And we had a good recommendation for plan zoning on this.
Seven yes?
Item 50, on the request from HDR Land Development LLC to amend the woods of Copper Creek PUD conceptual plan at 4600 block of Easton Boulevard, revising the southwestern five acres, removing it from Area C for multiple family and adding to Area A for single-family development. Subject to conditions, Council Communication Number 11-431. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none?
Mayor?
Yep.
This, this is a really good project. However, in the blue letter, it addresses the size of trees that are going to be planted and they're requiring the developer to plant a minimum of an inch and a half caliper-sized tree over story in the parking. The city itself plants one-inch trees in the parking. And I don't think it's correct to be asking a developer to go above and beyond what we do. And actually, in all, in all actuality, it's, it's worse. The larger the tree you plant, the longer it takes for it to establish. That's why we plant one-inch trees throughout the city with the exception of downtown. It's inch and a half to two inches, so you can't break them over. I would like to amend this so that the parking trees, the street right-of-way trees will be one-inch caliper over story trees and that it be coordinated with the municipal arborist. And I would also like to direct them that they do a review and revision of the city's existing landscape standards to be brought back within a couple of months, within 60 days to us with input from the new municipal arborist.
I don't disagree with Skip's recommendation, but I am very happy that they moved it from multi, multiple dwellings to single house. And I think that everybody around there is very pleased with that. So I'm going to move 50.
With, with Skip's-
Yeah, Skip's direction.
Can you summarize that for me again, what you were asking?
What the city's requiring them to do is plant inch and a half minimum-sized trees in the parkings.
And I agree with that part, but the arborist part where you-
Well, the, but the, okay, so you agree with going back to one inch like we plant ourselves. We have a new municipal arborist coming on board on July 11th. That's David Yon. He's from the city of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We're very lucky to be having this guy coming on board. And what I would like to do is have city staff review the city's existing landscape standards with input from David once he gets here.
The entire thing or just?
Yes, it's, it's not that big of a document. It was originally drawn in 2004. It's had a couple of small updates since, but twice I worked with staff on it for a complete revision. The issue is getting to it and getting it done. And I think that it's going to take city council direction to say that this is a priority. We're actually handing out a document that's got some bad information in it.
So it's really to update it to-
To update it, yes.
So what you're saying is if he has suggested changes, he would bring it to the staff and come back to us and?
Well, he should work with the rest of the staff because there's more than just trees and landscape standards and.
Well, and that should tie in also then to the landscaping guidelines that were just presented to the council, correct? Or that we haven't taken action on.
Yeah, he's going to have input into landscape guidelines also.
So work with all appropriate departments to make it-
Right.
Consistent.
Seven yes?
51, on the citywide PCC pavement restoration program, a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate in designating the lowest responsible bidder as Absolute Concrete Construction, Inc. Sonny E. Hall, President, $213,870. A is approving the contract and the bond. Council Communication Number 11-418. Any questions from anybody in the audience? Council? Mr. Moore?
Mayor, this is the company that was working out in Leverett Park last June when I started receiving complaints from the residents that live there. The first time I was out there with staff was June 17th last summer. And it took until November to have all the situations corrected. I did speak to some of the complaining residents afterwards and they said they accepted it because they wanted the issue to go away. I'm disturbed that these people are still bidding on our city projects. And I, and I do expect this to pass, but I'm going to vote no on it. And hopefully, we will not receive any more complaint, complaints on these people. But I, I think after what we went through last year, that it took withholding their pay to get them to go out and correct the situation. This was also the people that destroyed three trees in the process that had to be removed. And I don't think we expect that of any quality contractor. So I'm not going to make a motion on it, but I will vote no.
I'll move.
Four yes, three no.
Item 52, the 2011 Designated Neighborhood Sidewalk Replacement Programs, a resolution through the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Inc. Tony J. Vermeer, President, $340,350. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Council Communication Number 11-417.
Mayor and council, this is part of our overall neighborhood infrastructure improvement program, our NERP program that's been quite successful. It's incorporated into our capital improvements program that addresses sidewalks and curbs throughout neighborhoods in, across the city.
I'll move.
Item's been moved. I'd suggest that all citizens who are listening, write your congressman to encourage them to support CDBG, CSBG, Home Funds, all those programs that help us restore our neighborhoods and do a lot of work out there. Congress is threatening to pretty much scuttle almost all of these programs. They did in a significant way for this year. In 2012, it looks like some of the programs are going to zero funding. Item 53, 2011 Expanded Street Reservicing Program Contract One, Resolution Approving Plan Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers Estimate in Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as OMG Midwest, Inc. Doing Business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving, James Gouger, President, $979,980.55. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Council Communication Number 11-416.
Mayor and council, I'd also like to point out on this item, the funding source for this is also programmed in the capital improvements budget. The specific funding source is the gaming monies that comes to us through a combination of Prairie Meadows and Polk County. And again, this amounts to about a million dollars. We get about $6 million a year that are dedicated towards streets and bridge repairs and improvements. And this is consistent with what's in the budget.
Any comments from anybody in the audience? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Sorry.
Seven yes?
54, on the Blank Park Zoo entrance improvements, a resolution improving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate in designating the lowest responsible bidder as Larson &amp; Larson Construction, LLC. Jeffrey C. Larson, President, $1,889,870.93. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Council Communication Number 11-414. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
Mayor and council, also in the last few months, an agreement was brought before council related to the Blank Park Zoo and its fundraising program to expand the zoo. This was included in that proposal and in that agreement with the funding sources that are reflected here in the council communication.
We're moving the entrance north, Mark, and then it'll be kind of a turnaround type thing.
It'll come in from the north over toward the east and down east back into our park.
Mark, you quickly want to?
I have another question for you too, Mark.
How do you treat your daughter?
I was mitmusters.
Mark Lukovich, CEO, at the Blank Park Zoo.
Can you just briefly explain what it, what we're doing here and then?
What we're doing here is the current entrance was built in '84 to hold about 60,000 people. And last year, we had 385,000. So we're moving the entrance north about a quarter of a mile to the north end of Blank Park. We'll come in off of Southwest 9th with a right turn lane, come as far east as you can come up toward the Fifth Judicial, come down along that road and then back into the park as part of the- As part of the funding mechanism, there's a RISE and RIF grant being used. The, the RIF will be the berm and the road coming in to separate the zoo from the Fifth Judicial Prison. The RISE grant will be used to help develop some of the other items and that, and then the zoo will make up the difference for the new shelter house, observation deck, playground, and pond.
And obviously, I'm supportive, but the, the construction that you're doing now currently, that is with the Australia exhibit, are you behind schedule, on schedule? I heard that you're behind schedule because of rains, or?
We have a, a big mud hole going on down at the Blank Park Zoo. Australia is not too far behind. It will open up July fifteenth. We've, have managed to muddy our way through that. The Sea Lion Pool, every morning, they turn the four hundred-gallon-minute trash pumps on and pump out water so they can work about four hours a day, and then it fills up again overnight. So we're probably more like August fifteenth on Sea Lion.
Thanks, Mark. I'll move fifty-four and fifty-four, Dave.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other comments?
Six, yes.
Six, yes? I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Five fourteen. Thank you very much.